Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Special meeting agenda, we're going to continue our fiscal year '23 budget deliberations. Officially calling the meeting to order, attending commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Philly Oss. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. So you've got a couple of items that we're going to be addressing this afternoon. First item, fiscal year '23 deliberations to include a budget with staff accountant Brandy Falcon, but I think we're going to defer this, is that correct? Are we waiting on HR?
Yeah, I was just, HR said they're going to need until July 8th to meet with all the departments, so we don't really have anything to cover today for personnel.
Okay. So then we're moving on to item two. So fiscal year '23 budget, okay, so this is the B budget, operating budget, and take it away, Brandy, lead us, please.
All right, so we'll start off with the preliminary summary, showing where we are at. Right now, we're 66,000 more in revenues than expenses, a good place to be, but I do want to make it clear, we probably will go negative again, and that's due to a couple reasons. First of all, you guys have two meetings with Alliant in the coming weeks, that will probably increase our health insurance costs. Secondly, we have another payroll coming up, because we still haven't hit the cutoff for a budget cost, so that will change again. And then, the main reason that we've jumped so much in revenue is the assessor's proposed fee increase, so we have budgeted that increase in revenue in here. That was $590,000 increase, so that's really what brought us up, as well as appropriating some fund balance for the five-year plan budget. So, we're assuming that fee increase is going to pass. And then, also the fare budget, if you guys decide to fund the $150,000 of property tax to the fare, that's going to go straight to the bottom line, we'll be in the hole another 150. And then lastly, the auditor's office is still doing, working through a financial review of the airport, and if they require property tax funds next year, that is also going to go straight to the bottom line.
Okay.
So, that's where we're sitting for that. And today, we're going over B budget, which is a couple different components. So we'll start off with the easiest one, new programs.
Okay.
I highlighted in green, the ones you guys have already approved, you approved the pictometry for the assessor's office, that's funded out of their restricted Fund 46 fund balance. Approved, a new position for HR, which came with $3,800 of onboarding costs, and then you approved the onboarding costs for patrol to be paid for out of fund balance. So what's remaining is district court clerks are requesting DocuSign and Text Magic softwares, $2,900, and then sheriff maintenance is requesting a janitorial services contract and an HVAC contract.
So, back to DocuSign and Text Magic, is that Marissa, or is that Carleen?
That's Marissa.
Okay. So Marissa, my only question is, is there ongoing costs?
Just if we were to get it again each year, if we were happy with the services, it would be another $1,500 a year for the DocuSign, and
And then...
For the year, for the...
Text Magic.
Yeah, Text Magic.
Okay, thank you. And that is from district court funds, that is a restricted fund, or it's from the, Keith is shaking his head, yes? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're tax-supported, but it's specific for district court funds, yeah, so, yeah, it's restricted.
Okay. I'm fine with going ahead with that, it's going to help them do notifications and more collections and...
I'm good.
Nothing. Okay. And then, the janitorial services and the HVAC contract, we got onboarding for a person in there, and then we have other contracts that...
The $89,000?
Yeah, it's kind of a lot.
The, the janitorial one is $65,000, the HVAC is $23,240. They put in onboarding costs of $1,200 for the janitorial one, I believe, and I know Tom is here.
Okay. Tom, can you come explain the $65,000, please?
Yeah.
Turn your button on.
Yeah, turn it, yeah. The janitorial service is basically extending the existing one we have, it's adding a couple days, and then adding a couple buildings. We're having an issue with staffing the open position that was there, and the other position is overworked, so just trying to get a full-time service going.
Okay, so then, would that eliminate the position for one?
I think it already was, or at least that's where that one's funded from.
Okay.
From the contract last year. This is just an extension on, on getting more service and more buildings covered.
Okay, so who's taking care of the more buildings and more service now?
Does service would, if they...
But who's doing it right now?
The one that's, the position that works for the jail, is doing all of it, she's covering everything that they're not.
Okay.
What are we currently paying, this year?
I think it was one day a week, and it's 30, 35 a year.
$35,000 a year?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, you said you're going to go to three days?
This will go to three days, there's another proposal included that goes full-time, five days a week, but we'll have to address that later, that's quite a lot, quite a bit more.
Okay, but this three-day-a-week proposal, you're going to use money for the, the unfilled position?
That existing, yeah, that existing funding.
Okay.
So, how do you make that magic work?
So, if I'm understanding right, you're saying we would freeze a maintenance position?
I believe it's already frozen. We had two positions, one was frozen to provide the service we started last year.
Okay, I know there's a request in here to freeze a maintenance operator already from jail.
That's different.
That's different.
Yeah, I would have to go look and see if there's one currently frozen.
Okay.
I'd have to check with HR.
So, so I would say I'd be in favor of this, if we freeze that position and then use those funds to cover the contract, and then if by some miracle, you're able to hire that second person, we can go and, and revisit that, that situation.
Steph, do you know if that position is frozen? Okay, yeah.
I, I don't remember freezing the maintenance worker position, I remember, you know, giving a stipend and stuff for the...
Yeah, last year, we funded the, we took the one position and funded the contract with the current janitorial service, using that funds, but this obviously wouldn't cover all of it.
So you're adding, did you say you were adding three buildings, Tom?
We're adding three buildings and more days.
Okay. Are we okay?
I, I think so, unless auditor comes back with something bizarre, but yeah, I'd like to see where those balance out, at this point.
I can check on that.
Okay.
So that takes care of new programs, next we'll dive into non-capital requests. This is the detail of the non-capital accounts in the B budget, which is where some of the larger expenses tend to be at. So, I've, I've given you guys detail of everybody's requests, I can go down the list one by one, unless there's specific ones that you want to jump into off the bat.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Did you need more information on the service contract with the HVAC? Where do you get that?
Oh, sure.
This is a contract with ATS, who does our software for HVAC, this would guarantee, I think, a maximum of response time of a day. Currently, it's up to a month, we've waited for them to come and repair something on the roof related to HVAC, so this would guarantee a time, and as a priority.
Is this for jail only?
No, sheriff's campus.
Sheriff's campus.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, including OEM 911 and the service.
Oh, okay, all right.
Now where is that reflected?
In that $89,000.
It's in the $89,000.
Yeah.
All right.
And there's options, there's a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year, and that's...
Sir, a lot of...
Discount based on how many years you...
Okay, and so essentially, the, what does our contract cover now, does it cover all those buildings right now?
We don't have a contract right now, and that's why we're...
So we just call them out?
Yep.
So in this $23,000, then, does it also cover the call-out cost?
Up, yeah, there's a, per diem, I guess you would call it, up to a certain cost, there's discount on parts, and then response time.
Okay.
Who's the contract with?
ATS.
Okay.
Can you get me those details? I think I'm, I think it's a pretty good idea, just because you can't really wait a month to get some of the stuff fixed.
Yeah, that one was really, I was shocked.
Yeah.
But, you know, the staffing issue with them as well.
Right. Okay, I just know of another, I know of private companies who do this, and sometimes it doesn't work out, so I just wanted to take a little bit look at that.
Yeah, I'll email you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Moving on to non-capital.
Yep, non-capital requests, so do you want me to just go down the list, start from the top?
What do you guys think, Leslie, Bill? Are there any items that jump out at you?
Well unfortunately, it's, doesn't, I do have some, but it's not matching up, because I was using my old sheet, so, let me see if I can, IT has no detail on a $10,800.
Yes, so that, I spoke with James this morning.
Oh, okay.
Carrie's out of town, that was a request she put in.
Scanner.
But every year, they replace some scanners in various departments.
Okay.
And they switch out every year which department they do. So that's what that amount is for. And then also, the community development one, I just was able to speak with Reba before this.
Uh huh.
That is for some iPads and miscellaneous equipment.
Okay.
Is what they're requesting that for.
Gotcha, that's the $200.
That's, it should be $2,500, it's a $200 increase.
Increase, okay, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, okay, now I'm with you. Okay.
So, I guess just starting from the top, BOCC requesting a dishwasher and install, also microphones and a hard drive for the meeting room, building and grounds, a snowplow, community development, we already discussed those iPads. IT has quite a few. A lot of them, I don't know what an ID token is, but like windows licenses, computer replacements, copier replacements, printer maintenance. Audit is requesting 19 chairs and a printer, recorder requesting a label printer, treasurer is requesting miscellaneous office equipment, assessor, same thing. Assessor DMV is requesting iPads, computers, and monitors, as well as new flooring and a new window for their door.
Yeah.
911 is requesting 23 chairs and eight conference tables.
I have a question for 911. We had done a remodel, so were chairs not included with the remodel?
This is Lieutenant Higgins on the phone, no, the chairs weren't included in the remodel, remodel was only for painting and floors.
2317 Central.
And this is for the, this is for the conference room downstairs, it's our training room, where we can do in-house training, right now, there's just a conference table, so doing training down there is pretty difficult to do.
Okay, thank you.
2317 Central.
Moving on, HR is requesting a new door and moving cabinets for new staff, public defender is requesting chairs and floor mats, juvenile detention requesting a new cafeteria table, AMP is requesting four new chairs.
Okay, so we're going to flag that, because I was understanding it was six, but even six chairs at that amount is probably, I need a little bit more detail, so I will get with Keith on that one.
Okay.
And, so, I don't think we need to pull it, but we need to flag it to get more information.
Okay. Patrol's requesting 12 radios, and then camera docking and charging stations, they, I was told this morning, they're going to be cutting their request for a drone, they purchased that this year, and they're also checking on if they purchase those computer mounts this year as well, so I can flag that one.
Okay, so I want to talk about the radios, because it looks like 36, well, I guess, 34 for the jail, and then 12 are for patrol. Can anybody remember, is it 12 that's on schedule every year for patrol? Because I know we have a replacement schedule.
Actually, we have 15 in the budget, and I'm sure we need 12, right now, we're on end-of-life for about eight of them.
Okay.
And there's, right now, a box downstairs, I could not even issue enough, because that is like retiring right now, the new radios that are going to last.
Okay, thank you. And then I saw Captain Deek wanting to speak to the 34 radios.
Sure.
And are these the, are these the same radios as patrol, or these a little bit less expensive for different?
Yeah, they didn't have any downs for patrol, and they don't have any to hand me down.
Okay.
They have reached end-of-life, or it's not servicing, we can't buy batteries for them, the jails have the same radios for about 12 years, so we're doing...
Okay. I think, let's see what was else in there.
That's the 100, 106,000.
179.
Yeah, we had put in for a print, and I was informed today that we were not eligible for it.
Okay.
Kim Riley should be on the phone, attest to that, but she checked on it this morning, so we do have the budget for it.
Okay. I think that's...
And then you've got detectives? Oh, that was the drone replacement?
Yeah, they cut the drone request out.
How much was the drone?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look, I don't know. Overall...
There's like 10 grand is usually, or what they paid for the last drone, so I don't know.
I think, I want to say it was right under 10 grand, because it's not capitalized.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then that amount gets reduced by 10?
Yep.
Okay.
Jail, yeah, they had the radios, training dummy, 15 chairs, fingerprint supplies, a dishwasher lease. Airport requesting tablet and a laptop, and radio batteries, noxious weed is requesting a tank sprayer, and parks, a couple of the different departments are requesting mobile trauma kits. Nick told me, to my best understanding, it was to be like backup, if, if that country needed somebody to come out, the snowmobile or parks is the next line, I guess, so he wants to make sure they have trauma kits on all their snowmobiles and vehicles.
And all those are, I think, out of restricted funds anyway, from vessel from snow and...
Most of them, noxious weed is tax-supported.
Yeah, it's its own levy, though.
So, and they also had some radios. District court clerks requesting desks, cables, and phones. Carleen with district court has already went over the fiber enhancement in her budget meeting with you guys. Assessor is requesting four new desks for the appraisers, and then Solid Waste has a whole line of their own requests, but they are self-funded.
Yeah, and I think we went over in solid waste meeting, in, in their stuff, so that's fine.
So we've only got a couple of items there.
Okay, so I guess some things actually got taken, no, let me ask this question, the munitions safe, what are we using now?
That's for DRT, which is a new budget this year.
Okay.
Hoping somebody can answer that.
Hi, Captain.
It is part of a new program, but the ATF requires that we double-lock any munitions that are kept, and the existing safe is not capable of holding the munitions that we have. They've changed over the years, quantities have increased, more call-outs, more responses, so we do have to stock more, and we're just, we don't have the place to keep them secured.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So that's all non-capital, if you guys have any questions on that.
How much was that again?
Total FY '23 is $786,000.
Woo.
So is that, but that is a decrease overall of...
Overall, from last year, it's a $32,000 decrease.
Yep. Yep. Okay, I think I'm good with the non-capital.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the OpEx summary, this one is very detailed, I went through, and anything that increased or decreased more than 5,000, I tried to provide a high-level reason for those increases, just going off the transactions the departments put in their budgets. I can once again just go down through the list for the larger ticket items. BOCC went down 267,000, that's because they transferred their postage budget to Repro, which went up.
To Repro Graphics, yeah.
Almost the same amount, Repro also absorbed some costs from elections. And then, Building and Grounds went up 46 grand, and once again, this is a high-level view of their entire B budget, this is not individual accounts, so in total, up 46,000, due to repair and maintenance, janitorial services and supplies. Community Development went up 34 grand, that was due to travel, telephone, consultants, software uniforms were the main drivers of that. So as I go through these, if you have questions, feel free to...
What are, what are uniforms?
I'm not sure, that would be a question for Reba or David, if they're here, what kind of uniforms they use?
The building inspectors, they wear the uniform shirts and caps.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought maybe you were outfitting it. Okay.
And then...
That's fine, thank you, Reba.
There are quite a few IT ones, again, 29,000 for software maintenance and consultants, 68,000, or 66,000 in the sheriff's IT for software maintenance, hardware maintenance, seminars, some non-capital equipment and software. And then, once again, IT, $59,000 increase in telephone. This, the on-base, this is the first year it's being budgeted as B budget, so that's why it's showing up as an increase. The clerk, 40, elections, $4,700 increase in telephone, 32,000 increase in temporary personnel services, 14,000 in election supplies. The treasurer, increase in printing, postage, and then security services, I think that's the armored vehicle contract. And then, decrease in the assessor's office in postage and printing, because they're no longer doing the mailings. In DMV, increase in non-capital for that window they want in the door, and then the flooring replacement. Once again, increase in the security services, and increase in water sewer and gas. Coroner, increase in pathology and radiology, and I believe, I remembering his presentation to you guys, that had to do with the fentanyl autopsies, something along those lines.
Toxicology, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
And then prosecutor went up 10,000 in witness payments, HR went up 42 grand in advertisements, which I know they, we covered that in their meeting.
Took that up last week.
Yep. And then our liability insurance obviously increased. The BOCC increase in seminars, public defender went up quite a bit, but that's due to the high lease cost on their new space that they're occupying. And then juvenile detention did go up in airfare per diem and travel. And then, this is a grant, with the sheriff, the spillman fees did increase 55,000, and I believe Cheryl said that had been under-budgeted in prior years. There's a $6,000 increase in fuel in the animal control budget, $50,000 increase in fuel in patrol, $18,000 increase in ammo in SWAT, and then the contracted medical services went up 551,000. The extradition went up in airfare, fuel, and travel. DRT is a new budget this year, once again, witness payments up for the prosecuting attorney. This budget is funded by donations, it doesn't hit property tax, it just had some small expense increases. Let's see...
So that one, actually, they just won't spend the money if they don't have the...
Right, we just, yeah, if there's not donations, it doesn't get spent.
Okay.
And then, the airport had 58 grand increase for safety supplies, and then repair and maintenance, and then also increase in their water sewer and gas, and then obviously, we have the Panhandle Health Funding, we do have $18,000 increase in the Historical Society, I was going to ask for some clarification from you guys, I know we had the meeting with them, their budget is sitting in there right now. I don't know if you guys ever made a decision how much you're going to fund them.
What, how, what did we fund them last year?
Last year was $21,900, and this year, they are asking for $40,535.
So I, I would say, take the museum back to what we gave them last year, because I know that they increased it quite a bit. And then, the Historical Society was using it, I think, for a grant match and for some other stuff. And I think theirs was 8,000?
Okay, so take the museum to their prior year amount.
Yeah, what was it last year, was it 10?
It was, oh, the museum, oh man, I'd have to go look at the budget.
I think the museum was 15, and they've asked for 25 or something.
I don't have their presentation with me.
They're also getting $10,000 from the state, but that's a different application, I think.
Yeah.
I thi, I think in the case of the Historical Society, so they're asking for an $18,000 increase.
Right.
They're trying to do more, and they have in fact been doing more, and I think they've done a good job electing a new director, so...
That's the museum, not the Historical Society.
Well, no, I'm talking about Cory, the, the new chairman for the Historic Preservation. You're thinking of Brett?
Courtney.
Courtney.
Okay, so, right, so, so we're dealing with the North Idaho Museum, and we're dealing with our Historic Preservation Commission.
Right.
Right, so I think Historic Preservation Commission was asking for like 8,000 or 9,000, and then the museum was asking for, I think, double or something.
Oh, so you combined the two?
Well, yes, because it was presented at the same budget, and it's...
Okay, so, okay, so it's a $10,000 increase for the museum, and then what, 8,000 plus for Historic Preservation, is that it?
I believe so, yeah.
Here we go, I think I just found it.
I was just looking at it as the total.
Right. Okay, there we go.
Yeah, I was referring to Courtney.
Yeah, so, I guess we've given Museum of North Idaho 10,000 for FY '22, and then they've asked for, I don't know how that increased.
So, yeah, we can circle back to that one, if we need to, we can just flag it.
Okay.
You know, from my perspective, I think if you... Who's, who's on?
This is Kim Riley, I was calling on in, in regard to the Historical Society.
Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Okay, I'm watching on YouTube, it's on a little bit delayed, I think, the Museum of North Idaho was 20, and then they've asked for, so, yeah, we can circle back to that one, if we need to, we can just flag it.
Okay, I'm showing right here, the museum is asking, they, last year, they got 20, and this year, they're asking for 30, so the rest would go to the Historic Society. Yeah, so they're asking for a $10,000 increase, just for the museum.
I would drop that, I would reduce that to a $5,000 increase.
For the museum.
For the museum.
I'm for keeping them flat.
You want to keep them flat?
Yep.
What's, and what's Historic asking for, additional?
Last year, we gave them 20, oh, the, okay, so, the 10 increase for the museum, and then it would, so out of that, the other 10, 5, I believe, is for the Historic Society.
Yeah, so they have more printing copies, they have advertisement transcripts.
That's all broken out.
Education... Uh, education, computer supplies, consultants, um, facilities for community meetings, so temporary rental expense and, uh, awards, um, mileage. So I, I'm willing to, um, probably not fund it a hundred percent, but I'm willing to go and, and look at that and bring it up at our next deliberations.
You mean for historic or both?
Well, museum flat, but historic, um, looking at some of the stuff that they want to do.
Okay. And, and I'm okay with increasing the museum by five grand, but let's take that up later.
Okay, so you want to defer that till next week?
Yeah, we'll defer both to next week, yeah.
Um, indigent obviously went down because that program is going away. Uh, district court mental health is up. Uh, Carleen explained that was due to fentanyl and kratom testing costs. Revale assessors went up, postage, printing copies, six thousand increase in fuel. Once again, assessors went up, software maintenance, uh, travel and computer user training. And then Aquifer Protection District went up a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And then solid waste, uh, all their increases are down here. They're the enterprise fund.
Can you explain Aquifer or maybe Leslie you can?
Yeah, uh, we had the presentation. So every year they're trying to use up more of their fund balance. And so their pro- their projects and they're trying to acquire recharge areas. That's what that's for. So that's only Aquifer Protection. It is zero tax money.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's only APD.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the B budget. It's very detailed. That's why I tried to provide all this in advance for you guys to review. So if there are questions you have, specific ones that you were looking at cutting.
Take me back to SWAT ammo.
Okay, let me find it here. I believe it was eighteen thousand dollar increase.
Eighteen?
Yep, eighteen thousand dollar increase in ammo. And I, for further detail, I'd have to defer to someone from KCSO.
Come forward, Lieutenant. How are you?
Good, how are you, sir? Lieutenant Klinkus, Sheriff's Office for the record. Um, going off of notes from Lieutenant Howells, who's on another detail. It, it appears that the request is the same as what was requested last year. They're, they're also down four positions currently and have been all year, so they're anticipating filling those positions next year. And they'll need that extra ammunition to get those folks qualified and trained throughout the year as well.
Do you use the same ammo for practice as you do for live action?
No, no ma'am. That would be way more expensive, as you well know.
That's why I just wanted to double check.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You okay with that?
I mean, ammo prices are up. Um, they're, I'd rather have my SWAT guys fully trained than not, so.
Okay. Thank you. Really.
Were there any other questions you had on specific ones? I know that at the end we can, um, get into the discussion about B budget, employee rewards, but I wanted to get this in front of you first.
Yeah, um, I made some notes that I'll go back to the departments and, and follow up with them.
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm all ready now.
No, go ahead.
That's it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the bigger items as we, so let me just hearken back. Uh, BOCC, on-base, county imaging. Hundred, hundred and twenty-three thousand, James.
This is, uh, I believe the third year of four-year on-base program that, uh, was approved, obviously, two years ago. So this is the third year of that. Um, we're migrating from Paperclip to the on-base document management system and doing certain departments every year. I don't have the specifics of what department is this year that will be going for this year, but it's doing things like the BOCC Agenda Management is part of the on-base program. Employee Status Change Form is part of the on-base, but in addition to that, it's replacing Paperclip for the, all the scanned images will all go into on-base.
Yeah, so two budget cycles ago, we, um, approved about a four hundred thousand dollar, well, almost five hundred thousand dollar.
Over four years, yeah.
Over four years. So that's all this is, is.
Okay, it's a continuation.
It's a continuation. Which we love on-base, by the way, except we don't know how to work it exactly.
Stacking up against it.
It is. It's misbehaving today, so.
I know it's not user error.
Uh, other than that. Give me a couple of minutes here. Okay, we just act for. Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Uh, the shading in brown, Brandy, help me out. The notes.
The, on mine I showed is like red. I just highlighted anything that was greater than five thousand.
Okay. Because, yeah, I'm looking at mine online, okay.
Oh, okay.
Looking at the one for two hundred and eighty-nine thousand here. Oh, that's, that's Tram- uh, Ramsey Transfer Station.
Yep, so overall, solid waste, um, B budget increased seven hundred and fourteen thousand. General government was one point four million. So about a seven percent increase overall.
I think I'm okay for now, Leslie.
Okay.
Yep, I'll do my research and then I will have my list of cuts.
Um, and then lastly, the service awards and bonuses relating to B budget. There is a B budget account, number eighty-two forty-five, merit system and awards that a lot of departments use instead of these A budget accounts. Um, we've been discussing, um, in the auditor's office and then with some departments, if it would be better to move these amounts to the B budget account. There are several reasons for that. Number, um, number one, the departments don't have access to these A budget accounts when they budget, so the auditor's office has to manually.
Move them over to B.
Um, has manually, has to manually enter them. Um, secondly, not all these monies are being used as true A budget expenses, like blankets, turkeys, gift cards. Those should be B budget items. Um, second, uh, or third, I guess, uh, it would just, be easier for the auditor if it was a B budget item, because we don't have to manually do it. Um, we don't have to call every single department and chase people down for an answer, which is hard to do. Um, and because those dollar amounts just roll forward if we stick with that methodology. So, I mean, we're open to board opinion on this, but we could move the amounts that are used for like gift cards and that type of thing to B budget. And then only leave in A budget dollar amounts that are truly just a check written to employees.
I, I would prefer that, whatever makes it cleaner going forward and then it's less work for the auditor.
So we need to clarify with departments. Um, I, I can just get on the phone with them this week. Like this, the largest one is the fifty-five thousand for the jail, which the sheriff has fourteen grand already budgeted in their B budget for employee, um, like gift cards and bone, like that type of thing.
Right.
So, uh, we want to know, is this fifty-five thousand going to be truly just sign-on bonuses? If not, tell us the amount that will be B budget and we'll move it into your B budget. So it's not a reduction of budget, it's just.
Right, correct, it's just moving line items, yeah.
So we just, we can follow up with the departments if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. It'll make it easier next year because they can enter the amounts themselves. I won't have to do it for them.
And technically, they're not really issuing the sign-on bonuses anyway. That's done through HR.
Right, so then that would be another question. Do we put these funds in the HR budget where they keep like, um, uh, the bonuses they give if you refer an employee to an open position? That would be a board decision.
I think in the past, we have had sign-on bonuses through HR, so I don't know if Sylvia wants to comment. If that's going to be more of an issue.
Yeah, Sylvia, that's a good point.
I don't believe the dollars were in our budget, but we managed the program and routing it for the HR meeting request.
Okay.
Whatever the preference of the board is, we'll accommodate.
Okay, so I don't think it matters at this point. If, if HR is doing the process, then I don't think it matters where the money is.
Okay, so we'll just, I'll just have to follow up to the departments then.
Sure.
But if you're okay with that.
And so any department that has one of these line items, would you please send an email to Brandy? If it is cash or if it is actual turkeys or blankets or something else that needs to go in the B budget. So that way you only have to reach out to the people who didn't hear this message.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you're going to be contacting the individual departments, is that right?
Yep, just to clarify how they want these funds broken out between A and B. Hopefully, the majority will be in B budget, so they can enter them every year and track that.
Okay, so when is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is going to be, let me open it up, next Tuesday, I believe. And that's another item I wanted to ask the board about, so we were gonna get to some personnel today, but HR needs more time until the eighth. So we, I'll have to look at the calendar and maybe add a meeting. That, I don't know if we have one that week of July. But, so next week do you, is open as far as like topics. Like, so we can go back to OpEx, because you guys said you wanted to do more research.
Yeah, I, I could get my research and my, my list of cuts ready by next week. That's fine. Then you'll have time to, um, well, I mean, we're gonna have to make a decision if we're putting the fair budget in there. We're gonna have to make, um, Alliant Personnel will be up to you. And then the financial review, so.
So basically, next week we can take up almost anything other than personnel.
Right, so Monday is our next meeting from three to four. We can look at, if you're gonna fund the fair, the one-fifty, further questions, cuts you want to make to the B budget. And then I believe also Monday, the twenty-seventh, you have a meeting with Alliant. It's, it's not covering our costs for FY twenty-three, but it's going into some other cost-saving programs. Employee benefit programs for the board to consider.
What are you currently assuming for Alliant?
We're doing a five point three percent increase. That was based on their last presentation to us.
Okay.
Five hundred and eighty-five.
And we're, we're putting that all, we've budgeted it all as the burden of the county, but you do decide whether the county picks that up or they split it between the county and the employee.
I, and I'll just say right now, I prefer to, uh, have the county take the hit this year.
Okay.
And when is that meeting again?
Monday.
That's, so you have one June twenty-seventh on Monday, but the meeting that I'm going over the healthcare cost increases is July fifteenth.
Oh, okay, so it's a few weeks away.
Yep.
Okay. So for next, for the twenty-seventh, we ought to be prepared to make cuts? Yes?
For B budget, yeah, if there are cuts you want to make, then we'll have to do it next week.
Right. And A budget is deferred until, is it what?
Yeah, so Sylvia said they're gonna need until July eighth. So, July thirteenth, you have the Alliant Benefits Meeting. So July twelfth would be, this would be the next time we could pick up personnel again.
Okay, so next week is basically what, B budget?
Cuts you want to make to B budget and to decide if you want to fund the fair, the hundred and fifty thousand. And decide what you want to do with the Museum of North Idaho.
Community.
And the.
All community, yeah, we can just call that community support.
Community stuff, yep.
Okay, so B budget, community, what was the other one?
B budget cuts, communities, fair, yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, I might as well just talk about this right now. Um, I want to talk about jail medical real quick. If anybody wants to, whoever wants to step up for that. So it looks like we're doing, um, fairly decently.
Yes.
Um, and so I'm just curious why the, uh, half a million increase, if we're doing pretty good this year.
That's contractual. We signed contract with them. Um, in November, it was amended due to pay increases that they offered, and that's where the increase over what the original contract was.
Gotcha.
So it's actually like more like a three hundred thousand from when they renegotiated in November. Um, the other offsetting factor is the jail, uh, hospitalizations outside and other health, other healthcare professionals. Um, because the jail medical staff has done such a great job of assessing, the company's doing better than our prior. And there is a small ask in our B budgets for additional equipment to help with more of those assessments, so they don't have to send people out for that. I would encourage you to remain those in there and then probably drop the hospitalization line a little bit more than what even we, we suggested, because there were only a nineteen percent spent this year for that line item and.
Oh.
They've done a tremendous job of, of saving the county sendouts.
Would your team, uh, submit that to us, please?
Sure, yeah. We're on it this week for you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Bill, Leslie?
I, I think I'm good for now, so.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I have four fifteen. Meeting adjourned, thanks.